All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's January 18th, 2023 Shrewsbury School Committee meeting. My name is Lindsay Heffernan, and I'd like to begin, as we often do, by thanking Mark, Sarah, and the members of the Shrewsbury Media Connection for recording and live broadcasting this event. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on January 25th, and is also available on the SMC YouTube channel. First item on our agenda tonight is public participation. Tonight, nobody has expressed interest in addressing the committee. However, if in the future anybody wishes to participate in this portion of our meeting, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. Once recognized, speakers may have up to three minutes to present their material. The committee will also, of course, review and consider any written comments which may be presented to us before or after our meetings. Next up is Chairperson and Members' Reports. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
Oh, all right. Then we'll move right along to Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. I just want to make the community aware, and if you look at this week's edition of the Community Bulletin, the Visual Arts Department has shared a link to their virtual K-12 Winter Art Exhibition. So there are many, many, many slides of photographs of a variety of student work across the spectrum from kindergarten all the way through our high school seniors. There are some extraordinary pieces there, and I would encourage people to take a look in the Community Bulletin, and we'll also get that posted on our website as well tomorrow. It may already be there in different places, but we'll be sure it's right on the main page. But congratulations to all of our students whose art was selected, and thank you to the work of the Visual Arts teachers for helping them produce such really outstanding work. And the other piece I'd like to just share tonight is a note of gratitude to Kristin Los, who is the Assistant Town Manager and Economic Development Leader here in Shrewsbury for many years, who is last day here in Town Hall is tomorrow. She's moving on to become the Town Manager in Westford, Massachusetts, a community that is very similar to Shrewsbury in a variety of ways demographically. And I really have appreciated Ms. Los's support over the years. She's done a lot of work in directly and indirectly with the school department, has always been a terrific supporter, an excellent leader for our community, and we, on behalf of everyone in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, want to wish her well and thank her for her service to our town. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time-scheduled appointment tonight is the members of the SHS Student Advisory Committee. You can come on up if you like, just for some background. Under the Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a Student Advisory Committee, known as our SAC, consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. I will also note that Mr. Andrew Smith, the Shrewsbury High School Social Science Teacher I see, is here and serves as the faculty advisor. We did receive an agenda in advance, but I would welcome the Chair, Shalini Bijou, to maybe introduce who's with you tonight. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shalini Bijou, and I'm currently a senior. Unfortunately, Laura couldn't make it today because of a scheduling conflict, but we'll go down the line and introduce ourselves.
I'm Nicole Shan. I'm a senior.
I'm Anya Gupta. I'm a junior.
I'm Siri Urall, and I'm also a junior.
We'll start out with student life. So students at Shrewsbury High School are excited to welcome the start of a new year.
As we approach the end of Semester One, it's safe to say that the student body is finally taking a breather from academic stress. Everyone is very relieved to not have the added stress of midterms this year, especially for the AP courses. In comparison to the last few years, it's been helpful to have some time to relax a little before we re-styrenize testing later on in the spring.
As the new year starts and the semester comes to a close, I am looking forward to what exciting things this time of year holds. In fact, many clubs have been ramping up their activities and running in full force. However, on the flip side, the second half of the year also brings the SATs, AP tests, and for me personally, my driver's test. Regardless, I am happy to be moving forward and starting the year off new.
With all of my college applications completed, I feel relieved, but have also been hit with a new wave of worries. Having to apply to scholarships, patiently wait for college decisions, and ultimately make a decision of where I want to go has provided a whole new set of challenges. Nonetheless, I continue to push through, taking breaks as needed.
I'm super excited to round out Quarter Two and welcome the start of the new year. A lot of my fellow seniors and I are looking forward to our graduation year. I'm proud of my peers for remaining positive and working hard through the end of the first semester.
Late buses. In March 2022, Shrewsbury High School introduced a late bus system, which allows students staying after school on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to take a bus home at around 3:30 p.m. In the four months that the late bus was implemented for last school year, 310 students were registered for the program. This school year, over 250 students have signed up so far. With around 100 high school students taking the late bus every week, it is clear that many have been taking advantage of this free and convenient opportunity. Students, especially those who are unable to drive, are happy to be able to attend club meetings and other after-school activities without worrying about finding a means of transportation back home.
Waterfall schedule. As many of you know, SHS introduced the waterfall schedule at the start of the second quarter. At first, it seemed quite daunting and a hard adjustment, but after a couple of weeks, it proved to be a refreshing way to break up my classes. After conversing with some of my peers, it seems like this feeling is mutual. A lot of students expressed that it helps them feel more focused and makes the school day less repetitive.
Town meeting. On Tuesday, November 22nd, we had our first in-person town meeting since the pandemic began. Our STUCO president, William Wu, answered students' questions alongside our Principal, Mr. Buzidlow. Topics such as Wi-Fi in the Commons, building capacity, female hygiene products in the bathroom, and school lunches all came up. We expect STUCO to soon release a brochure with answers to many of the questions that they were unable to answer at the time.
Moving on to co-curriculars at SHS. SHS students have had a great time getting involved with co-curriculars outside of the school day. Firstly, the monthly volunteer plan for seniors. A new initiative that was introduced this year by the Assistant Principals is the monthly volunteer plan for seniors. Taking place after school, about 15 to 20 seniors volunteer at local organizations, such as the YMCA and elementary schools. This has been a really great way for our seniors to get involved during our last year of high school.
Winter sports. Winter sports have started off strong for SHS. Girls hockey and both track teams have gone undefeated so far in the season. For swim and dive, the girls have gone seven to two, while the boys are five to four. In addition, a huge congrats to the League of Legends Esports Team on winning the 2022 state championship.
Student Council and Community Service Learning Advisory Board. On December 16th, STUCO and CSLAB visited Grafton Street Elementary School and Underprivater School in Worcester. They gifted the students with books and did many, many fun activities with them. In one of these activities, the second graders learned the importance of their words and actions and witnessed the effect that kind words had on each other while also getting a bunch of stickers along the way. Our SHS students came back covered in stickers but are eager to go back and see the kids again.
VSA Movie Night. On December 16th, Shrewsbury High School's Vietnamese Student Association hosted an open movie night to all students featuring the classic film, Ponyo. Tickets were sold during lunches for $5 each, and snacks and drinks were available for purchase during the event. The movie night was a massive success with nearly 100 people attending. Congratulations to VSA for providing a stress-relieving and fun event for students and raising $853.
Speech and Debate. On December 17th, the SHS Speech and Debate Team competed at Natick's Holly Festival, one of the largest tournaments in Massachusetts. Out of over 30 teams competing, Shrewsbury took home the silver medal. This was just another addition to our impressive track record this year, including four semifinalists, three finalists, and one champion at the 43rd Villager National Level Tournament. We're ready for this momentum to carry us into the second half of the competitive season.
Finally, school spirit. As the school year progresses, students have been actively participating in various events and fundraisers to make positive contributions to our community.
First, we have the SHS Winter Concerts. On December 6th and 7th, SHS hosted their annual winter concerts. Freshman choir, concert orchestra, mixed choir, wind ensemble, and concert band performed on the 6th, while chamber orchestra, treble choir, chamber choir, and jazz band performed on the 7th. All of the ensembles performed beautifully, showcasing their hard work to teachers, parents, and friends. Now performing arts students prepare for upcoming performances in Semester Two, including the spring concerts in April.
Chill-out Week. Chill-out Week was a major success with a lot of participation from each grade. We began our themed week before break with Filenale Day, followed by Ugly Sweater Day, Whiteout Day, and of course, Pyjama Friday. It's been great to see the school spirit in the halls, and thank you for your support of SAC.
Thank you all very much. I wonder what questions I have for my colleagues. Please, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your report. Very informative. I had a question about the waterfall schedule and the impact it's had on lunch. If you guys could speak to that.
Yeah, so I think it's been a really great way to kind of sit with different people and talk to different people during lunch, because I do have different lunches every day. And usually, my lunches are with people within my class, so I've also got to meet new people within my classes as well.
Is it possible, maybe for those watching who aren't familiar with what a waterfall schedule is, just to describe a little bit about how it works and what it did to change the lunch schedule as well in terms of creating one more lunch? Who wants to take that? You live it, so you can explain.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, the waterfall schedule is that we have a different period first each day, or well, all of our periods are in a different order each day. Like, for example, on a day three, we would start with period four, then go five, six, seven, one, two. And our lunch block is usually in the middle of period six, I want to say. Yeah, period six. So it's during a different period each day. And yeah, we have different, it's split into four lunches, so we can have first lunch, second lunch, third lunch, or fourth lunch.
And that's a change when there were three lunches previously with some crowding. So one of the reasons that the schedule was adopted, as I understand it, was to create more space in the Commons for kids to sit by dividing among four lunches instead of just three. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
But as a result, it's changing each day because of the nature of that as well.
Yeah, and I've definitely noticed it's a lot less crowded. I can get my food and buy lunch a lot quicker, and I have more time to eat, too.
I understand one of the benefits of it also is the idea that you have a longer block. Maybe you could debate if it's a benefit. I've heard some different things in my house. But could you talk about what your, what your teachers are doing with that longer block? Are there certain projects or other things that are happening that maybe were difficult to have happen during the scheduling we had before?
Yeah, I think that personally, for my classes, a lot of my teachers have been doing like a warm-up or a review, which is really helpful, especially like when you're taking like an AP class. It's fast-paced. You kind of want that review, just to go over homework or answer questions. And so personally, I think that that's been a really good way that the teachers have been using the long block, just to kind of refresh our memory.
Great.
Also, first off, great, great report. I always appreciate the information you share with us. I also had a question about the waterfall schedule. I'm the parent of a junior. As you can imagine, I get quite a bit of feedback. So in, right away, I could see the benefits for lunch periods, but I'm curious, like, any challenges that you experienced early on that you see now that have improved over time since you've been doing it?
I think for me, in the beginning, it was just knowing what lunch to go to. I used to walk up to one of my classes, and then no one would be there. But I think that was early on the biggest challenge. But I mean, we're all getting used to it, and so I think overall, it's just been really, been working.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I wonder, a hot topic here has been start time. And we know we have surveyed high school students, but it's notable that it wasn't on your report. So either it's not a lot of chatter, or give you an opportunity just to say, what are, what are you all hearing? Because it's certainly a matter that's important to all of us.
So one thing that we did notice was that among the underclassmen, there seems to be a more negative perception on a later start time. Part of this is most likely because they take buses in the mornings. So I understand that you most likely have already talked about the impact of buses in comparison to Sherwood and Oak, but also, recent information regarding St. John's Time, which also gets out at 2:20, has recently come to us. And I know many freshmen are also nervous about like the backlog that will be caused by that. And also, just to add on, as someone who does sports and extracurriculars after school, I know many people who are in my clubs believe that this might cause another issue with pushing our extracurriculars back. But I know, with that being said, many people are open to having a new shift in the future.
Yeah, like, a lot of upperclassmen that I've talked to, they think that like, although it's just 20 minutes throughout a week, that will add up to at least like more than an hour of sleep, which I think a lot of us are looking forward to. So if it's implemented.
Right. Well, thank you. I certainly want to say, since we won't see you for a little while for our seniors, we wish you luck as you wait with bated breath for the mail and other such things to come your way. Dr. Sawyer, anything you'd like, like to close this out with here?
And thank you for the report. I think one of the things that I appreciated hearing about was a lot of activity relative to volunteerism and looking to do community service and finding ways to do that, as well as, you know, different student groups finding ways to connect, you know, within the high school community or beyond. That's something I know that Shrewsbury High School has promoted for a long time. Wasn't as possible, of course, during the pandemic, and it's very gratifying to see some of these pieces were getting students off campus to connect with other folks happening again. And, you know, that community service is something that's, that's always been a strength and something that we think is a really important part of a well-rounded education for, for our students. So I was really pleased to hear those pieces as well. And of course, the various successes, whether it's speech and debate, or our esports team, and the variety of different groups, that there's a lot of time and effort that's being put into, you know, those, those co-curricular activities. And we call them co-curriculars because we believe they're, they're right alongside our academic program and are really particularly important. One thing that I will mention, I should have mentioned during Superintendent's Report, that's new this year at Shrewsbury High School, is students participating in the club known as DECA, which I have to confess, I'm not sure what the acronym stands for, but I know it's a business club, and that a bunch of students were at the DCU Center last week, participating in a competition with a variety of other central Massachusetts schools. And my understanding is they acquitted themselves quite well for the first time that they've participated, and some are moving on to a state-level competition. And I think it's just a good example of when there's interest and we have faculty support, we're able to, you know, continue to find ways to provide opportunities for students of things that interest them and connect them to something they might become excited about, and potentially might play into what they decide to do after high school. But again, thank you very much and look forward to future reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Our next time-scheduled appointment is the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. We are here tonight for a recommendation to changes to the 2023-2024 school start and end times. And as some background, in December of 2022, last month, representatives of the Advisory Committee, some of the same ones who are with us this evening, presented two options for potential changes to school schedules for next year. And students, staff, and parents, and caretakers had an opportunity subsequently to provide feedback regarding those changes via stakeholder surveys. At our last meeting, Dr. LaZott was here, along with members of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, to present a summary of those surveys and answer some, some frequently asked questions that the committee was receiving or that we were hearing about through many of those public comments. And at tonight's meeting, we have members here to present a modified version of, and what is known as Option A, as the Sleep Health Advisory Committee's recommendation to school start times. And we'll just note for my colleagues that there is a memorandum that was sent under separate cover on this matter as well. And with that, Dr. Sawyer, would you like to start us off this evening?
Sure. And I did share the slide deck with the school committee just now, if you want to follow along on your, on your laptop. And we should probably take away that Student Advisory Committee sign in front of Dr. Parikh before people get confused.
Thank you, Ms. Parikh.
If they're just tuning in, they're going to think that we have very mature students. But, you know, again, this has been a really outstanding process that I felt fortunate to be able to help facilitate. You know, 26, seven, some odd folks stepped forward back in the summertime and early fall to be part of this. And as you heard when they presented the options, you know, a significant number of meetings in time at, at night, a lot of time outside of the meetings, doing research, developing reports on a variety of topics, and I know they'll touch on that this evening. But I think that it, ultimately, whatever the outcome is, it has been a very, very thorough process. Certainly understand that there, anytime there's something that is going to involve trade-offs and is going to potentially create change or recommendations for change, that by the very nature of that, there are going to be some people who are opposed to that or disagreeing. I appreciate that that, you know, through the surveys we've done and other things, has been very respectful, and it's been a hallmark of the Shrewsbury community. But certainly, there's an understanding that there are going to be, there are, just as there are people right now who are not pleased with the status quo, there are others who are not going to be pleased if there's any change at all. And then depending what change comes about, you know, some people would prefer one approach versus another, and that's, that's part of a public process. But what I can tell you is that, and, and all you have to do is look at the webpage, the amount of work, the amount of information, the amount of research that's gone into this work, and, and consideration of lots and lots of different opinions through a couple of different survey instruments, I think really puts the district in, in good stead in terms of being able to thoughtfully consider a potential change. And so with that, I'll ask the folks here to introduce themselves, and then they will go through the presentation of what the Sleep Health Advisory Committee is recommending for a schedule change for next year for the school committee's consideration and a vote a week from this evening on January 25th. But maybe going down the line, maybe starting with Cynthia?
Sure. Hello, I'm Cynthia Murphy. I'm a parent of a Shrewsbury High School sophomore.
Todd Buzidlow, Principal, High School.
Sarah Anani, junior at Shrewsbury High School.
Toral Parikh, parent of a sophomore at the high school.
Shane Quintard, parent of Sherwood Middle Schooler, two at Floral Street, and one loving life with Sarah Monica at Little Colonials.
So great. Thanks for having us tonight. And it gives, you know, I think, I echo Dr. Sawyer's sentiments, I think, across the board when we talked how close we've become in our eight to nine to 10, two-hour-plus meetings over the course of the fall. Really got to learn a lot about each other and really had some really healthy discourse, which I think is, is fantastic. And we learned a lot about people's schedules and a lot of things. So for me, seeing how this has played out in other communities, I really feel proud and, and happy to participate in this with such really, really great people. So tonight, we'll go through a slide deck, and we'll take questions at the end, and come up and share with the community and the committee our recommendation for school and start times. So generally, tonight, there's really five things we want to do is kind of summarize the general review of work completed by the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, discuss the options and consensus opinion of the group, present the recommended start and end times and adjustments to operations, discuss, discuss the benefits and considerations of the recommendation, and then request a consideration from the approval from the school committee. So as I said earlier, the Sleep Health Advisory Committee is convened throughout the fall to investigate and discuss and recommend potential changes to school start times for a 23-24 school year to better align with adolescent sleep health needs for adequate sleep. We spent significant time, as the committee knows, and those in the viewing audience probably know, based upon the number of reports we provided, we did a lot of research and studied sleep health, sleep health generally and start times. We broke into task groups, reviewed consensus guidelines from expert medical societies, investigated local child care and the impact that could have within our families and our staff, examined practices in other districts, and also sought and reviewed the feedback from stakeholders in the school community. Then we carefully considered all logistical and operational things that happen on our campuses, and worked towards developing a consensus regarding this proposed start time change. For those that are watching tonight, all these reports can be viewed on the Sleep Health Advisory School, Sleep Health Advisory Committee School Start Times webpage, which is very robust. So when we look at the consensus opinion, when we worked through this, I believe it was last week, we found that 76% of the group, or 19 of 25 of the members, have favored a modified Option A, which we'll talk about. 20% or five of the 25 members expressed a strong preference for Option B, which was the 8:35 start time for the high school. Either way, we delayed start times for all schools. We really significantly, which I don't think gives enough, I think we talked a lot about it, but I continue to marvel at how important a uniform time between each busing tier is, and is not right now. And as you've heard, our first bus pickup at high school is at 6:19 a.m. So by normalizing or creating some uniformity between those bus tiers, it certainly creates more space for the proper flow of buses and allowing students to get to school closer to start time. And we switched, basically, for this, we switched the order of the high school and the middle school, beginning their day, aligning the high school's start time with the expert recommendations for adolescents not to begin prior to 8:30. That was the five of the 25, and then 4% recommended, or one person out of 25 recommended no change.
So the majority cited concerns with Option B, the, regarding the decreased likelihood of timely dismissal. We all know that the younger you are, the harder it is to be efficient. So middle schoolers may not get on the bus as quickly as the high schoolers would, which would then delay the rest of the day for busing. Also, increased scheduling conflicts for a high school for after, extra help afterwards, or activities, or sports. Also, the concerns of if they have any other outside-school activities and maybe wanting to have a job, it may get to be too late for them to have that, and we didn't want to get in their way. It is important to say that we all recognize the importance of the 8:30 start time, but so we were really trying to balance the trade-offs and try to make everyone happy based on all of the surveys and reports, and really take into consideration what everyone else was thinking. So as a result, the Sleep Health Advisory Committee strongly considered an additional option, which involves starting the elementary schools also in the first tier at 7:55, followed by the middle and high schools. But we decided that that wouldn't be a viable alternative because, again, looking at what the community wants with the stakeholder feedback and the thought exchange survey, they just had a lot of expression, they had expressed a lot of concerns about this type of model. Also, that model had the most impact to family and staff schedules and childcare needs, so it didn't make sense for that reason. And of course, because they had done so much research, lessons considered from districts that had tried it, and it just didn't work as well for them. So the other reason that it wasn't going to work was because there are high school kids that do participate in after-school activities, and they are needed at home for child sibling care. So if those kids are getting home earlier, then the high school kids are not home to watch them. So that would have been a common problem, which could potentially lead to increased costs, which we're trying to keep down. Also, the potential for the, a need of an extended care program at Sherwood, and also increasing the afternoon extended care programs at the elementary school, which would again increase costs, which we try to avoid. So what we are recommending is a modified Option A, which shifts all school start times later. It maintains the current order of school start and end times. It equalizes each morning bus tier at 40 minutes. It shortens the middle school day by 10 minutes. And there's a modified end of time for both elementary students and educators, again, based on the feedback received from family and staff at the elementary level. So this is the same chart you've been seeing, but the difference here is, so tier one, the high school is 7:55 to 2:20. The educator time on campus is 7:40 to 2:50, and the length of the day is 6 hours 25 minutes. Tier two, the middle schools would start at 8:35 and end at 3:00. Educator time on campus would be 8:20 to 3:30 p.m. And again, same length of school day at 6 hours and 25 minutes, and the times between for busing would be 40 minutes. Tier three, the elementary schools, this is where the change was made, it's from 9:15 to 3:30 instead of the proposed original 3:40. So here, the educator time on campus would be 8:45 to 3:45, and the length of school day would be 6 hours and 15 minutes with the 40 minutes and 30 minutes in between tiers.
I'm going to talk about the benefits of modified Option A, and it will help high school students have a lengthened morning sleep opportunity by 20 to 35 minutes, because school will be delayed 20 minutes from its current start time of 7:35, and there will be 15 minutes added because it will, there will be a decreased need for early pickup for buses. The new modified Option A also supports middle school, middle school students' biological sleep needs, because many are going through puberty and have undergone natural shifts of their circadian rhythm, and their sleep opportunity is lengthened by 35 minutes. And this allows inadequate length of sleep for elementary students as well. Modified Option A also preserves the order of the current school start times, and this will help because the high school has the ability to load all students on the bus at the same time, and this benefits the afternoon busing timetable for all schools. And high school students will be dismissed before middle school and elementary school, which allows high school students to provide childcare for their siblings. And this will also allow for staff to require less childcare for their own children, and district, district families to require less childcare in the afternoons. If you compare this to Option B, it has a much smaller impact on afternoon activities such as extra help, athletics, clubs, performing arts, and employment at the high school level. And student and family feedback indicate, indicated- And student and family feedback indicate, indicated that there were concerns about Option B because there was a worry that students may lose the protective benefits from participation in these activities if we dismiss too late. And also, morning bus pickup and afternoon drop-ups are going to happen during daylight still, so this will not change the time that you are getting home, and it won't be dark outside. And it will also require a minimal to knowing, increase in district transportation costs because there won't be an additional amount of buses and drivers to make, because there will still be the same three-tiered busing system.
So the other things that we did take into consideration with these schedules was if an extended school care program would have to be implemented at Sherwood, given the later start time. But that's not in place yet. That would be dependent on how much family interest there is and if there really is a need and having financial viability for that. Also, the potential to existing extended care staff hours to accommodate longer morning and then shorter afternoon programs would be required. And then with the change in the high school schedule, the Little Colonial schedule will need some adjustments due to the fact that the Shrewsbury High School students do participate in the child development classes. Similarly, there may be adjustments to preschool schedules at Parker Road or Beale depending on transportation requirements and scheduling for preschool students that qualify because of disabilities. And then the Shrewsbury Public School staff with children may need to adjust timing of their own childcare, potentially needing less in the morning and more in the afternoon, depending which grade that staff works in.
So after our committee met and worked through consensus and had some really healthy discourse and debate, and I think Toral said it best where we, I think there's a number of people on that committee who really wanted the 8:30 based upon the sleep health and the science behind it, seeking feedback or hearing feedback from constituents and students, especially around their concerns around a later start time, we settled on moving forward the advanced, we moved towards moving, shifting Option A to create a modified Option A. So what we'd say is, the slide says it, we'll be able to support our students' sleep health and further advance our strategic priorities under the category of enhanced well-being for all, and we're proposing the modified Option A for your consideration and approval. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you all very much for being here and for the incredible number of hours you've put into this process. I welcome any questions or comments from my colleagues. Thank you.
Just a comment. Again, thank you. This is, I think, one of the best data-driven decisions that we're going to make. We've got so much information to look at, and I appreciate that you listened to the stakeholders, went back and took another look at what will fit based on what we were hearing after Option A and Option B were originally presented. And from a parent's perspective, my children, class of 2010, 2013, long out, but change happens, and my son was the fifth grade class from Floral that we housed at Sherwood. Dr. Sawyer, may I remember that? Pardon, the only one. Our first grade, my first grade daughter at the time couldn't go to Floral because it was overcrowded, so we had our Floral first graders housed at Beale even though they were in first grade. So we, we always have had change, and my husband and I are a two-parent working family. We both traveled for work at the time, so it was very difficult. I remember thinking, how are we going to do this? It did work out, but it was without concern and, you know, just worrying, how is it going to, what's it going to happen? But we always have to do what's best for the district, so change happens. It's not always fun to deal with, but I think the information you've given us has been very well presented and very, you've taken all those ripple effects into consideration because there's a lot of that that goes with any change. So thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank you all for the hours that you're putting into this. As Ms. Fred says, there's a lot of time and energy spent in something like this. There are a lot of moving parts when you're looking at it, logistics being a big piece of it, and all the stakeholder feedback we've received. It's probably been the most thorough presentation that I've seen, and that's saying a lot because we get a lot of very deep presentations over the years. And there, I mean, there's no one-size-fits-all to any of this. There isn't today. We're experiencing challenges with the current schedule. Maybe depending on where you sit, you might not be experiencing the challenges that others are challenging, that others are experiencing. I mean, I know as a, as a parent of a high schooler, as a junior right now, I'm kind of six years into the process of transportation as it pertains to the high school. And for the last six years, our bus stop gets picked up at 6:40 a.m. And school start time is at 7:35 today, so that bus is arriving somewhere around 7:05, 7:10, right? So there are some challenges there. I'm glad that we're putting an emphasis on, you know, the, the transportation piece of this because I think when people look at, you know, the, the schedule and the, and the time changes, it doesn't look like a lot, maybe in some options, right? But you need to factor in, you know, the full picture, that transportation's part of that, getting up, getting ready, getting to the bus, and then getting to school. There's a lot of, there are a lot of pieces to it that, depending on where you sit, whether your staff, students, family member, it could be very different. And yeah, I mean, as Ms. Fred said, change is hard. You know, even if, if we don't make a change, you know, it's still, we know the challenges that are in front of us today, right? So it's, it's, like I said, not a one-size-fits-all. But again, thank you so much for all the time and effort that you put into this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wonsky. And I think I would just note a couple of things for the committee and for those watching. I really appreciate how much effort was put into keeping transportation costs stable. And I want to just pull back a little bit about why that's important. Our number one expense in this district is paying our staff, and after that, it's buses. Pay a lot, a lot, a lot of money for buses. And every time we have another bus that we want to enter in the system, I think that's another staff person that we're not hiring to teach science or English or math. And so while we've gotten some feedback and to Ms. Wonsky, your point that, you know, that from where you sit, you might see this differently, some have said, raise bus fees and to just get more buses, and that's been pretty contrary to a lot of our position, both about fees, and fees are hard on families and the inflationary environment that we're in, but also that the fees don't come anywhere near covering the costs that it actually takes to run the, run the buses. And so while some, some ideas may seem good at first blush, I think this committee has done an incredibly thorough job looking at it from every single angle and then flipping it upside down and doing it again and again and again. And so I certainly appreciate that. I want to personally thank all of the individuals who have sent us feedback. We have received a fair bit of it. I'm sure we'll, we'll be discussing it again at our next meet on the 25th when we'll actually take a vote on the matter. And I do know much of the feedback that we have received have been from elementary parents who are, I hope they can appreciate some of the, the consideration to think about that start time at the end and moving that to 3:30, and that was certainly one of the pieces of feedback. And I also hope that they, that the elementary parents can, can think about, as those students age, they're going to benefit from some of these later start times as well. And so in the moment, change is hard, but hopefully some of these benefits, maybe they're not going to fill them this year, but they might in a, in a few years as, as we hope those students stay in the district and really ultimately benefit from some of this. So incredible complexity. And so not a lot of questions for you all, but I think we're just really appreciative of, of the work that you all have put in, into this effort and looking forward to being back here in a week and hopefully voting on this. Dr. Sawyer, is there anything else you'd like to, like to add this evening?
Just a couple. I would certainly encourage people watching to tomorrow, look at the website, and we'll, we'll email it out, the link as well. The memorandum that was presented, produced by the committee and this slide deck will both be available as links tomorrow on our website, and we'll, again, we'll send that link out. I think it, the memo, I think is fairly concisely is able to lay out the reason why that was the consensus choice, not the unanimous choice, but the consensus choice of the advisory committee. And it notes what some of the concerns is tonight, that those who preferred Option B, you know, why that was. I think that, again, there's, there's a variety of information, I think, that I would ask that people consider this through the lens of ultimately what is best for our students overall. And when we look at our district and we're looking at this type of piece, it affects different constituencies differently. Certainly, everyone would love to have a situation where whatever change may be recommended was very palatable to all staff and was very palatable to all of our families and was very palatable to all of our students. If that were the case, districts would make easy decisions about this issue all over the place. The other thing I'd like people to consider or think about is that there are elements of this recommendation that is coming from the advisory committee that have to do with some of the unique elements of Shrewsbury. It was, I think, the recommendation of specific times of start and end times would be different if Shrewsbury had a different geography, a different student population, and a different location for where all their schools are. If it were possible to, say, have 20 minutes between each tier, there's, there's a lot of folks who'd want to start high school a little bit later and start elementary earlier and have middle right in the middle and people, or, you know, some version of that. The 40 minutes that's necessary for the busing tiers is a reality that we have to cope with. That's a condition that we have to factor in. I think at the last meeting of the advisory committee, this issue that came up in more detail with regard to, you know, the dismissal process at the end of the day, we are very efficient by dismissing high school first because those kids and those buses can be on their way in essentially seven minutes or so. Because we can stack them up in front of the high school in a particular order, they're older kids, the bell rings, a lot of high school kids stay after school for different things, so the volume isn't as high. Whereas if we, under Option B, are middle school students, that's our highest percentage of kids who ride the bus among all of our levels. They're in two separate buildings on a campus where you really can't stack the buses in that manner. So by definition, it's going to take longer, as was referenced in the slide presentation. And, and, you know, frankly, the modification that is being recommended on the end of the elementary day to shave those 10 minutes off, to make that viable, we have to have a really efficient approach in the afternoon. And I think that was one of the factors that caused a lot of the folks to, you know, 76% of the, of the group to recommend this modified Option A. So there are a lot of logistical and operational pieces that must be considered as we look at the context of what works. One of the things that I'll be considering and looking again at the research that's been presented before I make my recommendation next week to the school committee in advance of your vote, which is my responsibility as superintendent, is this question of, is there incremental benefit by delaying start times? So the 35 minutes for kids on average on the bus at the high school level or 20 minutes for a student who is maybe driving to school and gets an extra 20 minutes by moving from 7:35 to 7:55 start time, are there going to be documented benefits from that? Or is it sort of an all or nothing until you get to an 8:30 time period, nothing is helpful? That's a key question that's been coming up, of course. At the same time, you know, the other conundrum we have is that the medical groups that make recommendations say, don't start middle school or high school until 8:30. And unless we move the elementary to that first tier, that's not possible. It's not possible under either Option A or Option B. So, you know, like most things, there are different trade-offs to look at and, you know, what elements can be beneficial, what can we be confident is workable. These are all things that the committee will need to take into consideration ultimately when you vote next week. But again, the amount of information that we have, the amount of feedback that we've received is very substantial. Certainly, you know, far beyond when one considers what's, you know, a meaningful population when you do a survey or whatnot. I mean, we're talking hundreds and hundreds of folks that have responded in different ways and to get a pretty good sense. And people still can and are encouraged to email the school committee, are welcome to email me with your opinions before a decision on this is made a week from this evening. So again, thank you so much for everything that's been presented and to you and to all of your fellow Sleep Health Committee members. It's been really a privilege to be part of the process and look forward to seeing what action the committee decides to take next week. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to our next agenda item under curriculum, we have the Shrewsbury High School Program of Studies, some proposed changes in our report. Each year, the high school leadership team makes recommendations for adjustments to the course offerings based on a variety of factors. And tonight, Mr. Buzidlo and Ms. Maureen Monopoly will highlight some of the proposed changes for next year, '23 to '24, which were included in a memo that we received in advance. As often is the case on matters such as this, those proposed changes will be back next week for us to actually take a vote on some of those changes, but tonight is to hear the, the recommendations. So I think, Mr. Buzidlo, I can turn it back to you. Glad to have you here with us again.
Thanks. I'll walk you through, we have very minimal changes just here to the program. I think we made some adjustments previous year, so we'll just kind of move through these, move through this presentation relatively quickly. I would say this, that I want to thank Mrs. Monopoly, Mrs. Wen, Mrs. Flynn, and Mrs. Claro. We work together in the fall as a group to review the program, to have conversations about what some offerings, potential offerings should be within departments. That typically takes two or three half-days of 40-minute conversations with directors and talking about current trends and research and all those things. And I think I owe to the, the team around me, the work of the team is really in this document, and they have had some really good thoughts and perspectives, but I really want to thank them for their, their thoughts and consideration as we move through all the directors as well at the high school. So this is really important for people that are coming to the high school, for parents that might be, don't get a lot of information, that would include me, around what course selection timeline may look like. So I'll run the committee through this and also our community. Believe it or not, our school council will start presentations in the classroom, starting up reviewing the program after it's approved, it goes to print per se, it gets pushed out to students, they can start to review that, look at what they may want to take next year. And counselors make presentations. Our teachers start to make recommendations based on student performance during the weeks of '26 to '13, so this is right around the corner. For those that are considering juniors, rising sophomores, our rising juniors and/or seniors, we're going to have an eighth advanced placement information night, which we encourage all students and families to attend who are considering advanced placements, have a better understanding of what that entails. That's going to happen on '28, February 8th. We also invite all our eighth-grade families to the high school, where they meet with our high school directors and basically four presentations and talk about a general overview to give them a better understanding of the program. That's going to happen on, I think that's a Monday, February 13th, at the high school. Ms. Burek's going to, I think, has publicized that, but we'll publicize it again. And then the hard work of meeting with, you know, our counselors are going to meet with 250 kids or 200 kids to talk about what their course selection should be and what their career interests are, their interests may be, or investigatory things. So they'll meet with those individually for about a month and get that squared away. Then they input everything into Power School, and then Power School gives us a number of requests, and then we meet with directors to start to set our sections, how many sections of English 9 we'll run, 10, et cetera, for every department. And what we're going to, we're going to allocate FTE and what class sizes should be. So this really starts the spine or the backbone of the master schedule construction, how we allocate resources. And then we assign directors to determine who's going to teach what courses. They communicate that to their staff, general assignments. And then we finalize, if, if parents or students don't agree with a recommendation from a teacher, we actually have meetings, face-to-face in-person meetings where we discuss kind of either their concerns, worries, or any type of thing, any things, anything that might come up that brings a teacher concern around a recommendation. And this typically happens with, I want to take three or four advanced placement courses and be in the orchestra and play a sport and have a part-time job and do my volunteer service. Like, we have a worksheet that kids go through about the number of hours in a day, how many hours they have, and what activity consumes what amount of time, and they realize that there's only 24 hours in a day and they do have to sleep. So we have those meetings as well. And then we really work on data entry after that, putting it all in Power School. And then Mrs. Wen takes her April vacation where it's nice and quiet and begins what we call the build, starts building the master schedule. And she'll work pretty tirelessly from that point until, you know, hopefully, two or three weeks later, we'll be able to load students into Power School, give us a best, the algorithm gives us our best percentage rate of getting kids their first choice. And we tweak it to give students the best schedule we possibly can, and the hope is to have that completed by June 1st. And then we work with our, oops, we work with our counselors, sorry. We work with our counselors from June to August to resolve any conflicts they may have. All right. Proposed change for the next year, it really isn't a proposed change, it's just kind of a point of reference is that Family Consumer Science will offer Mediterranean cuisine will be offered during the school year, and foods on the world, they alternate years. So that's not really a particular change, but that's been noted in our program of studies in, in the past.
You're taking my slides.
Oh, sorry, that was your slide.
That was my slide.
All right. Sorry, Ms. Monopoly. You can take this one for sure.
That's okay. Thank you. Over the next two slides, we have, we're going to address some of the proposals for our ITAMs department, which is the instructional... our ITAMS department, which is the Instructional Technology and Media Services Department. And the first proposal we have is we'd like to change the name of the department. We'd like to change it to the Technology, Media, and Business Department. This name will more accurately reflect the additional business offerings that we would like to continue to add into our program of studies for our students. The second proposal would be to, we'd like to change the name of our course, Financial Literacy, to the new name of Personal Finance. And again, this title connects better with the goals of the course, which is to have the students learn how to finance, manage their own personal finances. But our goal is to help them as they transition into life after high school and into adulthood. So that would be our second proposal for that. And then the final proposal for this slide, I believe, is, or to change, we would like to adjust the course description for our Introduction to Business class. This is only a slight change, but we would like to offer this to all students, grades nine through 12, instead of only to students in grades 10 through 12. Then we would also like to adjust the course description to our Student Innovation Team course. So with this, we would like this to only be offered to grade 12 students. Right now, it's offered to students in lower grades as well, but with this new change, we would like our grade 12 students to work more closely with our IT department. Students who are in SIT currently, they help with iPads, they help students and staff with any technical issues. But here, we'd like the students to move from the media center down to the IT department and partner up with the staff that work in the IT department. Here, students will be able to continue to help students and staff, but they will also continue to research apps and do some training models for the school. So we're excited about that change. And then finally, we would like to propose moving the accounting course from our special programs portion of the program of studies to the Technology, Media, and Business Department. Again, there's slight change in the course description, but what we'd like to do is to offer this for students from grade 10 through 12, instead of just to our grade 12 students. So those are our proposals for the new Technology, Media, and Business Department.
This is my slide?
This is my slide. This is, okay. That's all right? You threw me all off. And then our, with this, Performing Arts changes, we have, we would like to offer a new offering, it's an Introduction to Piano. So this would be an elective course for students in grades 10 through 12. It's for students who have little to no piano experience. We would use portable keyboards for this, and students would learn how to read music, learn more about the music theory or the technique, playing techniques. But by the end of the course, the goal is to have students play basic pieces and by the end of the semester. So it's a semester-based course. And then finally, we have some slight changes with the courses that we alternate between years for our program of studies. So we'd like to offer the Voice and Acting course instead of Theater Arts II in the Theatrical Design. Those three courses alternate in a three-year period, whereas we'd like to offer the Techniques in Music Theory I. That will be offered for the next year instead of songwriting. So those two courses alternate every other year. And I think that's it.
All right. So, Science and Engineering Department, we're proposing to remove the course Bioethics. Enrollment's been down, and we've been working with Project Lead the Way to implement Principles of Biomedicine and also the Human Body Systems. Both those two courses align with Project Lead the Way, but also they have similar topics to bioethics. So we're basically taking three courses and splitting the enrollment between it. So we're trying to build up the pathway within the Science Department around the biomedical piece. So we're going to ask to remove that and push enrollment to the other two courses. And also, due to low enrollment in our Visual Arts Department, we're going to remove or propose to remove our Art Appreciation course. Great world languages. For those at our, have looked at our program of studies and have worked to select a world language, this is a nice chart, because we, last year, if you remember, we changed the names of all our courses, a pretty lengthy name change according to ACFL standards. So Ms. Ralmeida has proposed this chart to make it really easy. And if you see at the right-hand side of the chart, the Seal of Biliteracy is in our intermediate four and AP-level courses, or five honors, or five honors or Seal of Biliteracy. The Seal of Biliteracy is actually, for students who take that and pass that exam, actually can get awarded college credit, but also can have their foreign language waived for some colleges and universities and state colleges made adjustments for the Seal of Biliteracy. And that was a really huge success last year, and I think we're going to report on that in the coming weeks around our performance, but that's coming up again in a couple of weeks here at the high school, the administration that. And again, minor language changes, Ms. Ralmeida proposed from the World Language Department around the course title description prerequisites of our Mandarin I Chinese to introductory Mandarin, that aligns with our language that we used last year. Additionally, prerequisites and descriptions for our Heritage Portuguese I and Heritage Portuguese II classes. And when you have a year one and a year two class, and as a cohort moves through, we'll need a year three class, so the new course in the world language will be Heritage Portuguese III, which is basically this course, people are like, what's Heritage Portuguese? It's basically for people who live in a household who speak or speak Portuguese, but they not, might not be able to read or write Portuguese. So we're focusing on some of the skills that they've acquired in their home life, and I think, I'm sure people in the community have had people that have immigrated to America that might have spoken a different language, or knew someone in their community that spoke a different language. And this is leveraging some of the changing demographics that we have, not only here in Shrewsbury, but also the country. So we like to support that as well. With that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes, please.
Just a question around the accounting course. So that was a one-year semester, and now it's going to just a semester course, so that will mean double the students?
Yeah, so we're going to offer it semester-wise, versus a full year, and hopefully you get more students exposed. As we, we've talked in the past, there's been a huge demand, and the number of students that go leave Shrewsbury High School and go to business school or study business, it's good to get your feet wet, I think, a little bit of what you might want to study before you spend thousands of dollars at a college or university. So this is another way that we can introduce people to some of those topics and get more coverage, I guess, or more enrollment.
Good, thank you. And just a comment on the biomedical piece, I'm glad, you know, there's more classes, because in this part of the country, there's a lot of opportunities for that, and to, again, have that opportunity in high school to see before you might go into a biology or biomed program in college, you go, oh, I hate this, this is not what I expected in these chemistry classes. I think it's just another area that is up and coming, so, thank you. I know you said minor adjustments, but it's a lot of work, and you're doing it within kind of the framework of the budget and everything else, so, thank you.
Any other questions? I would certainly appreciate, I received some letters from the wonderful Civics Program that you're running last year around the finances and personal finances, that was an important thing that students were telling us that they thought was important, so I'm glad to see some of those changes. And for those who are watching, and for those who may have forgotten, can you remind us what Project Lead the Way is and why that is in any way relevant to moving bioethics?
Yeah, so, goodness. A number of years ago, I can't even remember, I think I was assistant principal at the time, Project Lead the Way is basically a standardized curriculum that runs with a number of communities across the nation run the same curriculum. We partner with WPI, WPI is a training site for it. So basics, it's standardized curriculum to try and introduce students to STEM, standardized STEM programming across the country. They have standardized tests, they have standardized assessments at the end to determine how much they learn, the efficacy of the course, but also really, it's focused on hands-on learning. So there's a number of things that happen with our engineering program and also our biomedical program. Like, one of the, one of the pieces we do is, we do some forensics in there, where we actually have like a kind of a crime scene, which is pretty elaborate to set up, but they walk, talk about the techniques of how to collect evidence and how they process it at labs and the techniques they use at labs. So when we talk about, Mrs. Fritz talked about that experience of like real-world learning and the types of experience you might see in a lab. We mirror those types of experiments within that programming, so it gives students a good opportunity to kind of take a look at what that is. But it's a nationally recognized program that we subscribe to, there's no curriculum development for us, we actually send people to get trained for it in the summer, so we do have staff going out to be trained. But I think pre-pandemic, we visited a number of schools, I think we visited Uxbridge and Plymouth South or North. They both have biomedical programs, there was a grant that came up, I remember, we talked about this pre-pandemic, the 1-8 Foundation actually helped us support this grant, so it's a grant-funded opportunity to help us buy the materials, train our teachers, and continue to have subscription fees paid for. So that was kind of the beauty of it.
Great, and thank you. And I would just, I really appreciate the amount of effort, and that timeline is lengthy, and there's also, it's also quite condensed, the amount of work that's happening on the, some of those are very tightly woven together, and so I can appreciate both. This is the start of quite a lengthy process for you and your teams, and it is noted and appreciated. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
I appreciate the process that has been gone through, and Ms. Clowder's kept me abreast of it. I know she sat in on meetings with Mr. Pizdlo, with the various high school leaders and Mr. Pizdlo himself, just in terms of, you know, in the scope of what this program of studies is, it's, there are relatively minor changes, but that will have some substantive impact, as you've teased out with your questions. I think that, you know, to foreshadow a little bit, you know, we're, you know, remain thankfully on extremely solid ground financially, thanks to the override from a couple of years ago. That said, just given inflationary pressures and a variety of things, we're not going to be in a position to be adding lots of staff next year to, you know, for potentially new programs or things of that nature. That's a conversation we've had with our leadership team just recently. But, you know, a lot of these shifts are using existing staff in different ways, and that's something we need to continue to look to do. You know, for me, you know, increased access to business kinds of programming is a good thing, and the fact that, you know, it is in our strategic plan, the five-year plan that's just ended essentially, as we build our next plan, that we are, you know, looking, we wanted to increase opportunities for kids to learn about financial literacy and personal finance. That's been happening, and now we're revising that a little bit to make it more effective. And the only, you know, piece of suggestion I have is just to, you know, I'm familiar with the bioethics class, I think it's been an important class. You know, certainly the idea that some of those concepts are going to be taught in the other bio classes that you're shifting to makes sense, but I think making sure that that element is a really critical part of, I think, a benefit students have received from that class over time. And in a world where more and more of these dilemmas are posed with genetics and just high-end science having to do with the human genome and a lot of promising things, but a lot of things that could be concerning, if not handled in an ethical manner, and that's something that we want to prepare our students for, to think ethically about really critical elements and be literate in science around those kinds of things. And maintaining that to the extent that we can, I think, is a good idea, but expanding that Project Lead the Way program as we have opportunities to is a good idea. So, thank you for the work, I appreciate it, and look forward to a school committee vote at your meeting next week.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. The next item also under curriculum is our annual report on the state MCAS testing data, and each year, the administration provides a report on the district's performance on the state exams. This evening, we do have Ms. Amy Clowder, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to summarize the enclosed report that had lots of data. And we appreciate you for putting it together, so, Ms. Clowder.
Thank you very much. I think that was the understatement of the year, so I would...
I don't think you wrote 60 pages, so it wasn't, you know, but it was lengthy, it was a lot of work, it's a lot of work, thank you.
You're welcome. It's good work. I would preface for anybody watching at home that there is a lot more information than you'll hear tonight in that report, and it's available to everybody, so rather than going through all of the data that's contained in there, I'm going to try to seek to tell a story. But I thought I would begin with some broader context, because kids who are going to take the test for the first time often say like, why do we have to do this? And I think it's important to ground us in the fact that MCAS has led to higher expectations for all students. Previously, we looked at data for subgroups of students, but not necessarily tracking growth for everyone. And also, the looking at outcomes for students has increased kind of our awareness from educators and district leaders of how we can use data to refine our practices. And those are two really big outcomes that come from having a regular cycle of data. So for people that wonder why we put the emphasis on talking about this every year, it's not just focused on the results for that year, but also focused on how those results inform our practice in subsequent years. So, I know you're very familiar with that already, so I'm not going to linger too much on that slide. But also, looking at data aligns with our strategic priorities, and MCAS is kind of one way, akin to an annual checkup, that we see how the system is doing. And in particular, as we recover from the pandemic, we want to know what was... This is one way to kind of look at that. Like a checkup, you only, you know, that gives you a sense about which metrics you want to pay closer attention to. You're not going to play the role of doctor all year for yourself, but you might hear that you need to pay attention to your blood pressure or your activity level. And so MCAS provides us a way to look at individual student results and also kind of the health of the system, where is it that we need to pay more attention? So as I go through these slides, I've cherry-picked some places where I want to highlight strengths, highlight some stretches for us, and then kind of reflect more globally about this question that we posed about how we're doing with the pandemic. So, again, I used this metaphor before, you've seen it before, but it's just thinking about MCAS as a snapshot, because I think sometimes one of the fears that kids have when they look at their scores is like, does this define me forever? You might have a bad picture year, but your data is not, is going to change over time. And so we look at this both as a, how did you do this year, but also, kind of, how did you do this year compared to last year? Because we have successive years of data, and particularly with the pandemic, it's helpful to be thinking about how cohorts have done over time, because we know some cohorts have been more impacted by losing those foundational years than others. So, before we talk about the scores themselves, I just want to remind everyone, we switched to a new version of MCAS, one that was supposedly calibrating the ratings and the metrics for all of the tests at once, called the Next Gen. So now we don't have to call it the Next Gen, because as of 2019, everybody has the new version. It was canceled in 2020, resumed in an abbreviated form in 2021. So this slide is just a reminder to say that when we're comparing scores, we should be looking at 2019 as our last kind of baseline to compare with '22. And, again, MCAS gives us two scores. So one is kind of achievement, which reflects the degree to which students met grade-level expectations. So students can get a met or exceeded goal, or a partially met or didn't meet the standard under achievement. And then we also get growth scores, which compare students to their academic peers. DUCY, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, defines academic peers as students that had the same score history. And as with, you know, growth, if you're particularly tall, you're not going to have more room to grow. If you exceeded, your growth is going to be different from your growth possibilities if you had a partially meeting, you have a lot more room to grow. The important thing to remember about growth is that the state defines moderate or expected growth between the 40th and 60th percentile. So if you think about growth, it's helpful to kind of think about, we want to be in that upper-right quadrant when we're looking at it. And we'll talk more about that when we get to those slides. And for this year, because of the resumption of the normal kind of testing schedule, we have growth scores for students in grade four and above. Grade three is that first year, so you can't tell their growth because it's the first year. But that's not been the case in last year, and so we're back to kind of the normal way of looking at growth. And I think I covered the information on this slide, but it's just, the theory behind looking at student growth is so that you could look at the potential for students scoring in a range of different places to demonstrate growth over time. So a high achiever could have a growth rate just as much as a relatively low achiever. And also, we're not, we're looking at students compared to the groups of kids that scored with them the previous year. So it's just a different lens... So it's just a different lens on looking at student progress over time. So for science and technology and engineering, scientific, testing in science and engineering resumed for grade 10 last spring. So we now have results for three grades. I don't know if you remember, but we only talked about two grades last year. And student achievement scores in science suggest there wasn't much of an impact on learning caused by the pandemic, especially in the lower grades. We see some difference in the upper grades, and that may again be because of the grades that were impacted when the pandemic hit. So if we're looking at grade five, 64% of our students met or exceeded state benchmarks, which is an increase of 1% from 2019. Again, we want to compare it to 2019 because that's the last full version of the test. And that puts us kind of in the top three for districts in Assebit Valley and among the top four for DART comparison districts, just for context. Because initially, when you hear 64%, you're like, hmm. I just wanted to make sure that we set some context for that. In last spring, 62% of our grade eight students scored in the meeting range or better, which is on par with 2019. We're still significantly outperforming the state at grade eight, but our results when we look at our scores compared to other districts are less favorable. They're not terrible, but it's just an indicator, I think, of when the pandemic hit and what that content might have been. And here's where we see kind of the surprising result. High school was not required to take the test in 2021. So the new baseline for us in science is kind of this year. In 2022, 59% of grade 10 students scored proficient or higher, which is a really different outcome from what we would see in English, Language Arts, or Math. So that's a place where we really kind of want to watch what happens over time because as you'll see, as you know from the report, high school typically posts much higher scores for proficiency. In terms of math, last year, we talked about English, Language Arts being a relative strength. And this year, math is, math scores are relatively higher. And across the Commonwealth, that seemed to be a trend. At the start of the presentation, we talked about looking at strengths and needs. And so we see signs of recovery in math, especially if, so science, we think of as stable. We see more gains in terms of bouncing back from the impact we saw in 21 for math. And achievement scores rebounded at some grade levels, but we need to see more gains kind of across the board. So it's not like we're finished, but it's a good news story in terms of looking at the impact. So this is just an overview of achievement scores across the grades. I like it as a visual because it shows the relative strengths of grades three and four and six and 10 at a glance. It, there's no numbers on there by design because it's supposed to be just an at a glance lesson, but it will give you some context for why I'm focusing on specific grades. So grade four students posted the highest scores at the elementary level with 64% of students meeting or exceeding state benchmarks. That's a difference of 15% from where we were in 2019, but better than kind of the impact that we saw last year. So we're, we're gaining, if we think about grade four students, they took a half version of the test last year and that, so this is their first experience with a full, last, last spring was their first experience with the full test. And they were pretty impacted by the school closures and then uncertainty that followed. In context, you can see that that's a relatively good result compared to area districts and also compared to DART districts. So this trend of scores is similar to what we're seeing across the state. Again, Shrewsbury High School has posted very strong scores relative to other high schools, both in the area and compared to DART districts. 74% of students met or exceeded benchmarks in math, which is a slight drop from last year and a 6% difference from 2019. So overall, that's, you know, moving closer to the direction that we'd like to see. Again, a new baseline was established in 2019. So we don't have a lot of a trend to talk about. But that's, that's a strong result when compared to other area high schools. And I talked about sharing strengths and stretches. We have a stretch here with grade five. Grade five scores dropped. The same cohort as fourth graders were 64% meeting or exceeding in math. And so looking at, you know, why that is different for the following year is something that has led to kind of doing some digging because we're seeing roughly a 20% gap between where we would like to be from where they were kind of in 2019. So looking at what's the curriculum transition from grade four to grade five? And what is the impact again of losing some foundational skills? Where do we need to put more emphasis in the curriculum would be the focus? We talked about looking at subgroups and not just high needs. And there's a lot of detailed information in your report that I don't want to gloss over. But for the purpose of the presentation, the high need subgroup incorporates some of those subgroups in one, one go. And this illustrates kind of the achievement opportunity gap that we see. Again, with the state being in green and our Shrewsbury's high need subgroup being in orange compared to the aggregate scores for all students in the darker color, you can see that there's a gap between the high need subgroup and the scores for all students. One that we're working to close and one that's kind of different when you unpack those subgroups in ways that you can see in your report. But I think it's important to include this because it's kind of drives what we're working on in terms of equity. When we're thinking about growth scores, again, here's those quadrants. And we want to see students in that upper right hand corner. The size of the, of the orange balls speak to the size of the population of the schools. And you can see the schools listed below. Again, the state defines growth that we're looking for in the window between 40th and 60th percentile. So high growth would be above the 60th. And you can see as we look at the grades, kind of a range of scores by school, but relatively stronger growth scores at the lower levels. And then again, at the upper levels. So there's this interesting dip that happens at the middle level with strong rebound in grade eight and above that kind of drives those higher scores we see later for grade 10. And, you know, that I think shows the growth that we're seeing at grade 10, kind of right where we'd like to see in those four corners. So the average growth for the math at high school is 68, 68. And last time I presented, we talked about this green band being kind of where we're hoping people to be. And we weren't there. There was a lot of white space. So when you're seeing that we're recovering, you want to see higher rates of growth because if you can grow more than a year in a year's time, you're going to rebound faster. And so those are hopeful signs of recovery for most grades. And then again, we always want to look at, so how does that compare to rates of growth for student subgroups? Because if you're coming from behind, you're going to want those students to make faster growth. Growth for students that are struggling is another important kind of metric because if you're still not achieving the benchmark or you're not at the meets or exceed stage, but you've moved from, you know, not meeting to partially meeting, that's an important signal for kids, especially for student subgroups. We want the growth data to kind of reflect how hard they are working and how hard we're working to support them. So having a different measure on growth is another way we look at equity. And that's math. Shifting into English, Language Arts. The resumption of the full MCAS last year meant that students were tested not just in reading and reading comprehension, but also in writing. And that's an important, when we go from the half test to the full test, that might be kind of below kind of the dip in scores that we saw where we went from a position of relative strength at the LA to now relative strength in math. Certainly that was something that we've been looking at in terms of how much experience and how much focus on writing we've had. So when we look at English, Language Arts, grade three emerges as the strongest grade at the elementary level. And students at this level perform the state by a wide margin. 64% of students meeting or exceeding the benchmark for English, Language Arts. That compares with 81% in 2019. So that gives you a sense of kind of where we were and where we need to get back to and the impact of instruction in those lower grades. But when you look at other districts, that 64% again compares pretty well, both to other area districts and also to DART districts. DART stands for District Analysis and Review Tool. For those of you watching from home, I know you guys know that from your report. I'm trying to make sure when I use the term that I explain it. If we remember, high school students took the next generation test for the first time in 2019. And at that time, 79% of students scored in the meeting or exceeding range. So the fact that we have 77% of students suggests that, you know, even though we saw that dip in growth, that we're catching kids up by the time they, they take the 10th grade test. And our stretch slide for English, Language Arts goes to grade seven. It's interesting that like grade five, that's a transition grade. And 59% of students in grade seven met English, Language Arts benchmarks. So for context, there's only three other districts, Southborough, Neshova, and Westborough that posted better scores, even though I look at that score, I think that's where we want to focus our attention. And among the DART districts, you know, we did relatively well in the top three out of 11. So, well, I don't want to suggest it's a horse race. I do think it's important to kind of, when you're sharing a statistic like that, then think about kind of what's the comparison? Because I don't want people to walk away thinking Shrewsbury is really suffering and, you know, stands alone in this as the pandemic impacted all districts and all districts are looking at results like this. So fortunately, growth in grade eight allows most students to meet the achievement targets by the time that they're in grade 10. And so again, looking at the growth scores later in, in the slides will help us kind of see that. But in general, our growth scores for English, Language Arts are strong. So this is kind of our performance of the high need subgroup. Again, that's a composite group made of several subgroups. And you can see illustrated between the orange and those dark blue bands, kind of the gap that we see in performance for students with disabilities, for students who are economically disadvantaged. That, that's the work that we have to do. This looks familiar, except that instead of orange dots, we have blue ones. And you can kind of see how our schools cluster and also the individual's scores for various schools at the bottom. And then there's our growth for grade 10 in English, Language Arts with the average student growth percentile being 55. So when we're looking at growth percentiles, when we're looking at all students, there's that green band that we're looking for. And that's kind of shows how we're falling at growth across the grade spans. This is kind of helpful to kind of compare what the growth looks like for the high need subgroup. So we would want to see higher rates of growth to close the gap. And while they're well within that range, looking at how we can, as the state calls it, accelerate versus remediate has been really the focus of most of our learning conversations lately. So what are the next steps? What do we do with this? Well, we think about using the data to identify individual student needs and strengths to calibrate kind of district assessments, the things that we test students on in between MCAS administration. And particularly to look at how the curriculum reflects state standards because this is a test of state standards. And if we're not exposing kids to those standards before we're assessing, we can expect that they're going to not do as well as we'd hoped. We also collaborate across levels to think about best practice, both in terms of first, first good teaching and also interventions. So we know students have needs in certain areas. How do we organize to respond to those needs? And then how we're going to monitor progress and which kids we're going to monitor progress for. And that kind of is, gets back to that why MCAS, it helps grow capacity in terms of looking at data. So on the right is kind of an example of a test question. And looking at how students do in various test questions has helped us to resequence curriculum units to make sure students in grade four get geometry before geometry is tested, for example. And that also similarly, students have practiced doing writing so that they'll be successful when they get there. Again, you've seen this slide before, but looking at growth over time helps us to get a better picture of how well we're serving individual students, but also all students. And time for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Clowder. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. And I actually just want to drill down a little bit on next steps because obviously, you know, I think we walk a fine line when we get this information. There's obviously very important information we need to consider here. Are we in alignment with state standards? We have information about learning loss, which we need to take seriously. But on the flip side, we don't teach kids for the purpose of hitting standardized testing benchmarks. What's, what's an example of a conversation that might happen with some of our educators in a particular school where, for example, they see a question or a subject where we were out of alignment? Because I recognize that we have this sort of delicate balance where we want our kids to do well. We want to treat learning loss seriously, but we don't, we don't teach kids for the purpose of achieving on a test. How does that conversation kind of look?
It depends on the content area. From a curriculum lens, for example, we know that students are tested in science kind of episodically. So if they're tested in a subject in grade eight that they haven't touched at all in grade six and seven, we know that there needs to be some review of some concepts before they take that exam, just so they have a framework for what they're doing. And it might look like, remember, as we're talking about this notion here, that links back to the same work we did around biosystems in this grade. It doesn't, like, remember, you're taking the MCAS, you need to know what this term is. It's more a matter of how do we have some continuity with the curriculum? If we're talking about like a, a specific issue of, of low writing scores, for example, when we looked at the open responses, it wasn't so much that we needed to practice test writing, but that writing overall was really down. So how do we make sure that we're emphasizing more opportunities to practice writing and develop fluency? Because it wasn't any one type of writing, it was all writing. So that means that we focused on the key basics for reading and math, math when we had limited time. And we suggested kids that do writing and we gave them writing practice, but I'm not sure we focused on that during the academic day because it felt like we wanted to really maximize teacher time and face time with students. And writing typically happens kind of independently. So I understand why that happened, but thinking about where are opportunities to really instill writing is something that we've been talking about. And then there's questions about, you know, intervention. So this student is now in a, you know, two grades, but still working kind of a grade level below. How do I not lose their connection to the grade level content for this grade? And also give them short up support? And so we've been, you know, teams have been convening in various grade levels to look at, how do you improve teachings so that you can not limit access for students who are struggling from grade level content? And that's really about scaffolding instruction. So those are three examples I can think of off the top of my head. There's a lot of, of thinking and reflecting that happens with this information. And I'm really glad you acknowledged that balance because we don't want the message to be, you know, we're gearing kids up for this annual test. That, that's not the point. It's helpful information, but really it's, it's the assessments that happen in between that are most valuable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think Mr. Pallett raises that really good point because we're looking at all of this data at a very high level and what is the state average? And, and parents really want to know for their specific child, if there is some gap or some issue that they're noticing, and this is one point in time. And we have other testing. You know, how do we drill it down to that specific child and the need from either year to year or just in that grade? And I think that, you know, we talk at such a high level. Like, to me, that's where we need to do some more messaging around, what is it specific for a child who has an issue? And what do we do as a district to make sure that they're getting that need addressed in a timely fashion?
Yeah. I mean, you'll hear that we are looking to increase tutoring hours because our, our model before was focused on intervening with students at the lower grades. And we now know that some of the students we missed are not at the lower grades, but they need foundational work. So how do we organize to support more kids? Because our tutoring system wasn't designed really for, for that. And as we look at the needs of emerging. Um, and as we look at the needs of emerging, you know, kids that are now in third and fourth grade, we have to build a different kind of model of support.
Right, great. Thank you.
I just, um, I think you raised this during your report, but the fifth grade and the seventh grade and how it's kind of the transitional years, it seems like there may be, um, you know, the scores were a little bit, you know, challenges there. Um, can you, do you, have you seen maybe any um things that can be addressed, like in terms of, um, you know, more support for kids going into like a new new programming and the different levels? Is that where you think maybe some work can be done? Or I don't know if there's, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I really want to commend Sherwood, who took the opportunity that presented itself when world language was removed from that level to think about adding um an academic focus block. Um, they've also really started to use the STAR assessment data to think about how to respond to student needs um and how to use that block to to kind of respond to kind of small group and individual needs in a way that's new for them. I also think kind of a common sense approach is to look at how often do we talk with curriculum teams across grade levels? So we're switching from an instructional coaching curriculum model at the elementary to kind of content-based curriculum coordinators at the middle level and trying to foster connections between the coaches and the coordinators um and the coordinators and the department directors at the high school level has been something I've been really focused on. Um, so the opportunity to convene the literacy council, for example, and to really look at, what is effect, what does the science of reading tell us is really effective practice? Let's do that together as a unit uh is is one thing that's really top of mind for me, because then I think it makes it easier to have those other conversations about instructional moves. Um, at the high school, we're looking specifically at what we're noticing around uh some subgroups having more access to grade level content than others. And so how do we make sure that when we pull small groups or when we put kids in certain courses, that we're not preemptively keeping them out of other opportunities? And so that, uh, the math coordinator at the middle level, Melissa McCann, and the director of the math department, Jean Marie Johnson have been in a cohort kind of conversation with us around that, together with the director of the English Language Education Department. That, to me, is really exciting. But that's a longer term. Thank you.
It's helpful.
A a couple of thoughts. Um, I think you you've mentioned again, just want to commend the amount of effort it takes to sort of take all of this data and find uh sort of the the signal in the noise, as there's a lot of it. And there's and it's, and it's, um, so appreciate your sharing your perspective with all of us. Um, I do want to say in your report, uh, a particular ta- um table visual that have been put together, I think, with focus schools, looking at some of those high need students um towards the end of your report, and breaking down those different subgroups, I think is going to be important information, is we're going into strategic planning too, of like, how do we maintain that focus and and make sure we're attending? I I certainly noted for some of our um students with disabilities, it's been a rough couple of years and a definite area that I that I I I know I personally would love to see us um and see some improvements there, but we have to, we have to be able to see that number and look at it and then know what it means and understand it. And I, no matter how many times you say it, as parents needing to be reminded about the difference between achievement and growth and why both are important and both really matter here. And I noted one of your last slides had a high school ELA, fifty-five growth, fifty-five was the growth score in in that forty to sixty range for our high need students and also for all of our students. It's like, ooh, okay, we had all these issues, things are interesting things going on at the the lower levels. Then we get to high school and we have growth rates that doesn't mean achievements are the same, but growth growth rates, and so kids are, um, and so there's a lot of good stuff in here and it's so hard to find it. And and I think another thing, just as a reflection really, I know you you and the teams at the at the younger levels through eighth grade, thinking about STAR and the importance of STAR as a another way to have another data point and multiple data points, because obviously, for those of us who are are parents, our kids took these a long time ago. And so, uh, uh, to have more of that. But I, one of our challenges, I think, as a district is kids get the MCAS report, it comes from the state, it's very official, it's got a lot of stuff, and you're supposed to understand it, it's complicated. STAR is talked about sometimes at some levels and doesn't doesn't come home in the same way. And so it's, it is challenging to know, oh, there's another thing that's happening. And I appreciate why some assessments are really good for teachers to understand and break down. But how do we kind of help open up? What is, what is some of that telling us during the year? What are the, what are the opportunities at parent teacher conferences or some other places to kind of pull that? So so parents, so we're not overly focusing on the one thing that comes from the state that looks super uber official, because there are many other things that we're looking at as well. Um, and so somehow cracking that open a little bit more with some communication, I think, in in a longer term is important for us so that we somewhat demystify, while it is very important and telling us a lot of things and really is obviously helping us to compare across lots of different populations and know how Shrewsbury kids are doing. I think there's a lot of really important work your team has put in place that's adding even more color, right? And and so how do we pull that out?
Yeah, I think, you know, to the credit of the team, they're very focused on, they want to share something with parents once they feel like it's a really good piece of information to share. And so trying it out to see, can we use the the STAR assessment data to kind of predict how kids will do is an important question that they were kind of skeptical about and needed to see, kind of what that looked like. And then we had to kind of think about, what's a calendar for collecting the data and taking the screening points? And then how does that, I like, honestly, I wasn't reflecting, how did that line up with parent conferences? So I'm not sure that in some, in places, they had enough data, kind of finished and processed to share. But I think you're absolutely right. Um, that we have seen a correlation and and then increasing use of the assessment information, at least among data teams, thinking about how to engage families with that is is really key, because there are some nice kind of tools that are very quick to monitor student progress in very specific areas. Um, and I think that would be reassuring to families that know, okay, I know my kid's worried about fluency, but how are you tracking that progress on fluency? We have a way to do that, so we need to be more communicative about it.
Well, and I I appreciate the challenges there, and I was throwing out parent teacher conferences as just one moment in time in this in the school year. So I'm not suggesting, and there's already a lot to cover in those eleven minute blocks or whatever they are at the elementary level. So, uh, but thinking about the, how do we communicate the many other ways we're looking at students' performance um that that give us some more flavor here and that remind families that it is not just this one thing um is as important as it is. Uh, and 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 because it is so new, I think many people still don't really even know what's happening there or what it is. Um, but I I commend your team for trying to come up. We know we need some more frequent short assessments to help us understand how kids are doing and their progress. So it's important work and maybe it is, it doesn't get the the limelight of MCAS. It probably never should, given the importance of MCAS too across the board, but it but it deserves some uh to help us, to help us understand what kind of the important efforts that we're going through to really monitor progress throughout the year. Um, and I I would never want anyone to think that we're just all sitting around waiting for MCAS to know how the kids are doing.
Yes, that we're not. That it's a good idea, because it also means that if we have kind of a common communication, a common letter, that's not necessarily the MCAS letter, but more a STAR assessment letter, then we can also, if it's consistent, we can get it translated and more accessible. So I wrote that one down.
Well, thank you again. And Dr. Sawyer, anything you'd like to add here?
No, I mean, it's a lot of information. Uh, appreciate Ms. Clodder's uh report and presentation. Uh, want to thank, I think, earlier you might have mentioned, but Jeff Thayer, who is the new data specialist for the district, um assisted with getting some of the data and putting it into the format um that could be, you know, helpful. And and I know that there's other things he's doing, working with Amy to provide, you know, data sheets around lots of different things that can be a dashboard for teachers and teacher teams to look at, student performance over time and and look at where we need, we can be most effective with interventions. Um, I think, as was mentioned, looking at this as a systemic view of the health of, you know, a particular grade level, a particular topic or subject um is is the most useful piece of this. We don't want this to feel like a high pressure thing for kids uh because of the nature of it, the nature of it in the media, the nature that families have a sense of it. Uh, sometimes despite our efforts, the kids do feel that. Uh, you know, we want them to to put their best foot forward, of course, and there is, there can be some some healthy sense of stress to perform well when when something is is considered to be important. We want to keep that in balance as best we can, of course, as well. So, you know, the overall uh data is something that's important. Um, there's definitely areas we have to pay attention to, uh, that are a little different than what we're typically have seen. Uh, you know, to to anyone to think that it wasn't going to be some significant impact as a result of what we had to do during the pandemic. Uh, you know, no matter how well we did it, there there was going to be impact on kids not getting as much instruction. And I think that, you know, it's interesting to see where that's taken effect or had the most impact at this point on this particular measure. Um, so again, it's one snapshot and uh it's something that it's important, uh, but it's a piece of the puzzle. Uh, you know, we have extraordinary educators doing outstanding work with kids. We have terrific families supporting kids' learning. Uh, the overall messages, our kids are doing relatively fine and probably better than a lot of expectations were coming out of the pandemic. That said, you know, places where there it bears us to uh to look carefully at what kids may have missed, um, that's going to be a process that's happening. It's already happening this year for sure. It's going to be a multi-year process. Um, and we want to have, you know, are reminded of the old phrase of, you know, be quick but don't hurry. Uh, you know, we want to, uh, you know, certainly have a sense of urgency to make sure kids get what they need. Uh, but if we do it in a way that feels panicky, uh, you know, that that's not going to lead to a healthy, you know, regrowth over time, just like, you know, getting back into shape after an injury. If you go try to go too fast, you end up re-injuring yourself or missing pieces. We want that good thoughtful approach that's going to get kids to where they need to be over time. Um, but again, appreciate all the work that Ms. Clodder and her team have done, and uh thanks so much for the thoughtful questions and comments from the committee.
Excellent. Uh, and our next item, I think maybe you're staying with us, Ms. Clodder, is our in Finance and Operations, our S R three grant recommendation amend, and this is a recommended amendment, excuse me, looking for a vote this evening. So in September of twenty twenty, we did have stakeholder feedback and solicited solicited online and in meetings with various groups to inform a planning process. At this, the school committee did vote to approve Shrewsbury's plan use of the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, also known as S R three funds, that was submitted um to DESI in October of twenty twenty-one. Some of those original projected costs have been lower than anticipated, so the committee is being asked to review and approve a proposed amendment to that spending plan prior to being submitted to DESI for approval. So I will turn it back to, hello, Mr. Collins, good evening. Um, turn it back to to the two of you to help us, level set what we're doing a little bit here. And I know there's some materials that we received, um, a spreadsheet and the like about some potential changes.
Sure. Why don't I just provide some context about the process and turn it over to Mrs. Clodder to talk a little bit more about the content? And um, I can assist with that as well in terms of the financial piece. But in terms of the the process, of course, the, you know, we always bring forward to the school committee uh any new grants uh that are received as a matter of process due to the Massachusetts statute that says really the school committees need to accept grant funds. And the purpose of that is to kind of uh accept any kind of grant funds with eyes wide open about what those responsibilities are or strings attached, if you will. Um, and so we bring those to you in the fall when we typically get get notice of all of our state and federal annual allocation grants. This particular grant, uh, the S R three grant, which is federal elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, part of the COVID funding was the third, and that's why it's called S R three. It's kind of the third big allocation of federal funding. Um, and for for Shrewsbury, it's just over one point two million dollars for just this grant alone. Um, this allocation came with many more strings attached to it than S R one and S R two, which were, S R one and S R two were basically kind of, we know you're going through a pandemic, here's some money to help, use it towards defraying and offsetting COVID-related costs. And this one came with much more restrictions, like getting lots of stakeholder feedback about how the monies ought to be used, putting together very specific budget plans. And of course, because it was grant funded, we brought it to the school committee for a vote. And uh it it had to be a vote on a specific plan, if you would, well, which uh was presented to you in October of twenty twenty-one. So, um, you know, another part of the process, grants management process is, you know, it's not unusual to have grant amendments. Uh, and grant amendments uh in in the Department of Ed standards are, anytime you're going to be above or below ten percent of a particular category of expense, they require us to do an amendment and provide some rationale for that. Uh, but they don't require school committee votes for that. Uh, we felt like, uh, because of the attention that was given to S R three and the specificity of this, that we would anticipate uh in advance of submitting any kind of grant request to the Department of Ed, that we have a school committee approval uh around the amendment plan. So that's why we're bringing this forward to you uh this evening, as opposed to, you know, other grants where uh it's really not required. So that's just kind of a process piece. And uh at this point, I would turn it over to Ms. Clodder to talk a little bit more about the content. And again, I can kind of help with some of that piece as well.
Thanks. Uh, so even within the normal federal title grants, you know, you you have a plan for how you're going to spend the money, and then you might need to adjust that plan, as Patrick said. Sometimes you have to um resubmit an amendment and the state might audit that and ask you, you're like, why do you think that that could go onto that grant? Um, when we wrote this grant, we had to kind of anticipate what were some student needs we'd have to respond to without kind of full information. And when I think of the Summer Academy being a great example of that, like, how how much does it cost to run a Summer Academy? I don't, I don't know. I'm going to estimate the number of kids coming and the number of sections I think we'll get based on the STAR data, like, these are the number of kids in need. And then the grouping size and the staffing, and then having, you know, getting staffing was a challenge. So we were under budget for those items for the first couple of years. And then thinking about the emerging need, it became clear that you can invite students to the summer, but for lots of different reasons, kids are less available than you'd like or you get, you know, less of your target audience than you'd like. So the value of having supports that work during the school day became really important, especially for um students at the middle level and thinking about how we we do tutoring, except then we weren't able to fill the tutoring positions we were lobbying for. So when we look at it, it's like, okay, we we've got a tutoring force in place that's interested in expanding hours at the at the lower levels. Let's use that model that works and intervene um with more kids. So we're looking to intervene with grades three and four, which is not something we typically would would do there. Um, and shifting some of the funding and then thinking about what's a different model using the late bus and some other kind of stipend support for supporting middle schoolers, because clearly waiting for a tutor that we're not finding is not really helping kids. And then um the other piece is thinking about some of the curriculum shifts we talked about in tier one. Like, what is effective instruction that's inclusive for all kids, that exposes them to grade level standards? Means we need to do some shifting in terms of literacy practices. We know that that's a bigger, I know you heard in our budget workshop, that that's a bigger number, but we could use some of these funds to tackle a little bit of that. Did I leave anything out?
Uh, the only other things I would say is that, uh, you know, the original plan called for the one point two million dollars to be expended over three fiscal years. And because we spent less than anticipated in the first year by about half, that this revised plan um brings this into fiscal twenty-five and actually, per the plan, uh, provides uh right now for a a fourth Summer Academy, which was not anticipated under the original plan. So it it kind of stretches the dollars over a longer period of time. The final thing I would say is that, uh, you know, the the way to kind of read this in summary is, you know, the categories of expenses are the Department of Ed categories, grant categories, those are standard categories. Uh, those aren't school department categories. The original award uh award amount, you can see by category that was approved uh by you and the Department of Ed for one point two two million dollars. And then if you shift over to um the amendment amount column, the three-year total, uh, you can see that the differences there um by category where it, but the total is still the one point two million dollars. And then the change column is basically the change from what was the original award to what we would submit to the Department of Ed um as an amended amount for that particular category. So you can see that, you know, some shifting away in big picture, some shifting away from some staff uh resources towards uh instructional materials like literacy and curriculum materials that Ms. Clodder just referenced. So uh those were not in the original budget, and uh this amended plan uh calls for allocating uh just over a hundred and three thousand dollars in that area to provide uh those resources, uh, which are one-time expenses, which is also kind of a positive piece. So I think that might cover the summary and happy to answer any questions you have.
Just a real quick technical question, Patrick, is probably for you. The the stretching the dollars to cover an additional Summer Academy, I imagine most of my colleagues are supportive. are supportive of that. They cannot be stretched again, though, right? Because it ends that fiscal year, so that's September 30th of 2024, that we couldn't decide, you know, the end is near after that summer in terms of how these dollars, do I have my timing right, though?
Yes. So this is federal money, and they've run these particular grants on the federal fiscal year, which runs 10-1 to 9-30. And so, as you said, this particular grant has to be fully expended by September 30th, 2024.
Certainly, it opened up to my colleagues, I apologize, but the, given what we just heard about some of our MCAS data at the third grade level and the difference between where we were in 2019 and where we are today, the literacy and using some of those dollars for some curriculum materials, I certainly can support. And an additional summer academy, even if, hopefully, a few years from now, you don't have as hard of a time getting folks to want to do it, but appreciate the efforts here. Other colleagues, other questions? No, okay. I think, apologies, I've lost my page. We need to take a vote, then? Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. Sawyer, was there anything else you wanted to add here?
I support the revision amendment to the plan.
Okay. Looking for then, motion to approve amending the existing American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, also known as S R three grant funding spending plan per the enclosed memorandum.
Submoved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor can do so by signifying with an eye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your efforts here. Our next item is the approval of minutes. We have minutes that were sent to us under separate cover for our January 4th regular meeting and also our January 11th workshop. Folks have had an opportunity to review those, any edits needed? No, those can then be marked as approved as submitted. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purposes of addressing national law 30A to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid program, known as purpose seven, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, or releasing executive session minutes, also for the purpose of addressing national law 30A 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declares relative to Shrewsbury Educational Association Units A or B, Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and the Cafeteria Workers Association, and additionally, for the purpose of addressing national law 30A 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, known as purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body. And we will return to open session only for the purposes of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
Submoved.
Thank you. Thank you. A roll call vote being required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you and good night.